I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education for January 9th, 2018. Present is Ms. Trisha Pitko, Ms. Jennifer Leeper, Mrs. Christine Vitale, Mrs. Jessica Gerber, myself Philip Dwyer, and Jennifer Jacobson. Mr. Asa will be here shortly, I know he's in the building, Mrs. Jennifer Maxon Cunelli, and Mr. Jeff Peterson. I'd ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We will start with student reports as normal. We have two out of the four of our students here already, so why doesn't somebody start?
Right, 200% effort, okay. Well, first to say, it's good to be back from the extended vacation. I know that waking up on Friday, knowing that school's canceled, and it's, for someone my age, seeing clear roads basically means opportunities are endless. But my colleague Ted is currently at a co-op meet for a ski team, which both schools participate in. And related to sports, the Holiday Classic Tournament happened recently, in which the four Fairfield High Schools participate, and Ward achieved third place. Ward also hosted a wrestling tournament on Saturday, in which we placed first out of the 20 other teams in our 10th invitation. And we had a gift card drive with our faculty and PTA to other Ward families. And we had five successful caroling concerts back in December, which had pretty good turnout. And our Achievement Gap Task Force held a successful fundraiser, and will attend a NIES conference in March, second that. And our midterms have been backed up one day, which we are currently working very hard to prepare for. And that's pretty much our main focus right now, we're doing good. Pass it on to my colleague.
Like those at Ward, we were all very excited waking up on Thursday, Friday, and Monday, not having school. It was definitely a nice way to ease back after our Christmas break. So at Ludlow, we had six successful candlelight concerts. They were enjoyed by the town, the faculty, and the middle school students, who came and watched us perform on one of them. This weekend, select Ludlow music students are going to be participating in the Western Region Musical Festival. And midterms, like at Ward, are delayed a day and will not be beginning until next Friday. On the subject of midterms, some of the NHS students are organizing review sessions. So we've been collaborating with different teachers in some of the underclassman classes and the AP students, so everyone can be well-prepared for their exams. And then the senior volleyball tournament, which was supposed to be held last week, will be postponed until after midterms. Since we've only had six days of school since our last meeting, there isn't a whole lot on the schedule yet.
Is that a complaint that you've only had six days of school?
It's been quite nice.
Any questions for our student representatives from either Ludlow or Ward? Seeing none, thank you very much. You're welcome to stay for the budget presentation or any other part of the agenda, or you can move on as you see fit. For public comment, now's the time for members of the public to come forward and present to the board on any agenda item. Does anybody wish to come forward? If so, please come forward and state your name and address, and comment to the board. Whoever gets to the microphone first is first.
Hi, my name's Janine Allianello, and I live at 472 Mill Hill Drive.
Raise the microphone.
Hi, Janine Allianello, 472 Mill Hill Drive. I'm not sure if I'm the right part of the public comment. I know you're going to be approving some funds for Mill Hill School, and I know you're making some decisions about the capacity of the school. I'm excited for it to get renovated, but I had one consideration regarding the neighborhood. I know there's issues with the terrain of the building, stuff like that. But I live in the neighborhood, and there's two private roads, and the overflow of traffic for the school, there's like a lot of problems with the narrow road. And I was hoping, when you were going to consider the size, 504, 462, 441, if you would incorporate a traffic study to make sure that that land is able to have adequate parking and safety ways for the buses. And many people drive and park, and sometimes I can't even get out of my street. And they're very narrow, two private roads where cars cannot park there. So I just thought, if you could have a traffic study as part of consideration for your approval, I'd appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to come forward and present to the board? Seeing none, on to regular business, which, this is the annual meeting at which the following year's budget for 1819 is presented. So I'll turn it over to the superintendent for that purpose. And are we doing anything?
We are doing PowerPoint.
So we're doing a PowerPoint, so I invite board members to move out to the audience.
Well, good evening, and thank you for your patience while we were loading. Before I start tonight, I want to go ahead and say thank you to a couple of people, and an entire team of people really, that spend hours and hours to put this.
Sorry. Yeah, I don't like.
Testing? No? Oh, that's better. Before I start tonight, I do want to just say thanks to a couple of people, because this budget does take hours and hours of work. And it actually, when you pass the budget in the spring, we actually start working on the next year's budget, believe it or not. And I want to say thank you to our Executive Director of Finance, Doreen Munzil. Again, she really oversees a whole team of people who put not only the budget book together, but just putting all of the numbers, and it's a tremendous amount of work. Also, to our senior leadership team, all of our executive team. Again, they really work together and collaborate to put together a budget that they believe is really responsible and respectful for the town and for the schools to keep us moving forward. And I would just want to mention that our budget books for the board will be handed out right after the presentation, so we have those printed. We do have some budget books tomorrow that will be delivered to the town, so if there's anybody here tonight that doesn't have theirs, they'll be coming tomorrow. So let's get started. First of all, I want to say to our Chair, Dwyer, to Vice Chair Jacobson, Secretary Gerber, members of the board, to the community and to the staff, thank you for being here tonight. As I present you the superintendent's recommended budget. We're going to start tonight looking at four different components of the budget. First of all, we'll talk about our revenue and expense history. We'll look at our student demographics and enrollment. We'll talk about what are some of the budget challenges that we are having this year. And then also, what do we have in this budget to make sure that our school district maintains and sustains to be one of the very best in the country and move us forward to 2020? So first of all, we're going to take a look at some of our revenue and our expense history. What you'll notice is, each year when we present this budget, this pie chart really doesn't change a tremendous amount. Everything that's in blue on the right, and then you'll see the benefits on the left in the light blue, that is primarily what makes up a school budget. And that's why, when we are in difficult budget times, it's incredibly difficult to find efficiencies in places, because so much of our budget is actually staff salaries and benefits. We are a people-driven business. What I like to do as the superintendent is make sure, if we are a people-driven business, and we're spending most of our money on salaries, where are those salaries going? And are we targeting those salaries in the right place? What you'll notice for Fairfield is that we are targeting 82% of that to direct classroom support. That's our teachers, certified staff, paraprofessionals, and ed trainers. The next two largest categories that you have behind there are right here, and you can see custodial and maintenance. And actually, out of that custodial and maintenance, 5% is custodial, just to keep our buildings clean. The other area that is critically important to schools, secretary and clerical. When we look at Southern Fairfield County per pupil expenditures, this is again a graph that, a bar chart that a lot of you see every year. We are at the lower end of Fairfield County. We're the third lowest in our per pupil expenditures. And if you look where the black bar is in the middle, that is the average of all of these school districts. And I think it is important to point out that if we were funded just at the average, this current school year, we would have another $20 million in our budget. And that's just at the average. And what that says is, we are asking our staff to do more with less, and we're doing a great job. One challenge, I think that this is not new to anybody, especially over the last few years, is the challenge of disappearing revenue. When you look at 2015, and what you're looking at in this chart is, this outer band is your 1516, the inner band is 1819. If you go back to 1516, we have 4.42% of our budget, which is still relatively small, actually. But there is a difference when you look at 1819, and now this year, we're going to be expecting only 2.8. We've lost not quite half of our funding, but that's a lot. And when you look at the differences in federal funding, we're holding relatively flat, and also in our other sources. But what you will see on this slide is the change from the local funding. Whenever we lose state funding, of course, that puts more pressure on the local funding in order to sustain our budget. So what are we doing as a school system to try and generate additional funds and be very responsive to cost avoidance? These are just a couple of items. This is not meant to be inclusive. If you look at that bottom item, over the last two years, we have saved $5 million in just health insurance, because our staff was willing, all of our staff were willing to make that change. And if we did not have that cost avoidance, the budget this current year would be $5 million greater. And I think it's a really important thing to point out. When you look at increasing billable costs, this is a new line item you'll see on the revenue this year in our budget. We billed, as in our students who are in other school districts that actually come to Fairfield, their home district is another district, we are allowed to bill their costs for special education on a line-on basis. Last year was the first year that we did that, which generated another $291,000 in the budget. We've also consolidated bus routes, and we eliminated two bus routes this year. We did not add a third that we had talked about adding last year. Again, that's working on bus efficiency. And then, of course, the item at the top, the board has approved annual increases in pre-K tuition. I want to talk just briefly about education cost sharing, because it is in the public, and we hear so much about it. And especially, I think, even in the spring, we'll continue to hear a lot about ECS, or educational cost sharing. And this is money that actually flows through the town side. Some districts, it will come through the school district. In Fairfield, it does go through the town. But when they talk about how they fund schools, it's important that we understand what ECS means. In 2014, the town received 3.8 million. In 1516, that was slightly reduced, 3.5. When you look at 2016, at the beginning of the year, we were budgeting at 3.5, that was the beginning of last year. We had a reduced allotment of 1.6 million, after the budget was passed, unanticipated. Then the town actually received 1,095. So when you look at that year-over-year, we've had a 2.4 million dollar reduction from one year to the next in our educational funding in Fairfield, in ECS funding. The proposed amount in the bipartisan budget for this school year, and as you know, we started the year without a budget, we didn't really know what ECS was going to look like. In the bipartisan budget, it was 1,032, but a month later, that was already reduced to And when we look at next year's budget, which is what we're talking about tonight, the proposed amount in the bipartisan budget was 1,091. What we have put on our revenue line, and of course, the First Selectman will most likely change this by the time he presents his budget, we just put in what we know today, and that's that 903,000. But again, when you think about that 2.4 million dollar loss in ECS funding, I want you to think about that as in 32.6 full-time teachers. That's the impact of losing, even though it's a very small amount, actually. And when you think back to that original 4% of our entire budget, but when you think about 32.6 full-time teachers, that would be the equivalent of all of our teaching staff at Borough Elementary that we have lost. Now, the one thing I do want to point out on that revenue and expenditure, is that 3.2 million that we've lost in ECS, think back also to what we have recouped in our insurance at 5 million. So we've been able to mitigate that. We are staying focused on energized and talented staff. We're going to stay focused on diversified population, and our STEAM initiatives, exemplary music and arts, I think we all know how important that is to Fairfield, our exceptional high school graduation rates. And also, at the bottom, we're trying to balance that with all the new mandates, state budget cuts, and the fixed cost increases. When you look at the impact of recent mandates, this is just a list, again, it's not meant to be inclusive. These are just different mandates that are either coming down the pike, or that we are already dealing with. Some of them are actually good. You know, new high school graduation requirements, we're for that, and we're very excited. And as we talk about that this spring, we're excited how the state has approached that. But there will be a cost to that, to stay progressive and to stay current, and to meet the mandate of the law. But when you look at that number three at the top, that is probably the one that scares us the most. Mandatory preschool for all three- and four-year-olds. We will be watching, January 1st of 2019, is when the State Department must have something ready for the legislature that will have a proposal for mandatory universal pre-K. Will that come to fruition? We don't know. But if it does, that means we are also educating a whole nother grade level. Universal pre-K is very different than the pre-K that we offer now. When you look at student demographics and enrollment, this is really important when we go into the budget season every year, because we want to understand going forward, we also want to understand the past. When you look at our Fairfield student demographics, this is just how many students that we're educating. Generally, what you see in enrollment are these top four. You'll see our pre-K number, elementary, middle, and high school. But we don't want to forget, we actually educate more students than that. We have 82 students who are in magnet schools, and we do fund them. We have 102 students right now who are in out placements. So we have 10,100 students that we're actually educating, but they don't all show up when you talk about PPE, and sometimes people forget about our other students. One demographic that's really changing for us is our English language learner, and this is not uncommon across the country, but in Fairfield, it is new for us. If you look just back at 1314, we had 214 students. And this year, in 1718, that's up to 261. And probably the most interesting thing about the 261 is, it looks like we only grew 10 students from last year to this year, but in fact, we lost and gained, but we actually gained 52 new students, which means we're not only seeing that population grow, but we're having a large migration pattern of students coming in and out. With our students who are eligible for free and reduced meals, we're staying under 10%. State average is around 38. Students with disabilities, our district is 11.2, and we should be very proud of that. What that means, so we're really working with our families to make sure that when we go to a PPT, we're placing students who really need our help. Students with disabilities statewide is rising to about 14%. When we look at our graduation rate, Fairfield Ludlow and Fairfield Ward should be very proud of this graduation rate, that's at 98.2 from last year. And again, that's an excellent, you will never see 100% in graduation rate. And that's because of the way that the rate is formulated and is calculated. There is a percentage of students who by law, and they need to be with us until the age of 22. So you won't see, because that 2% of students are going to stay with us until 22. We tend to look at this slide each year, we have over the last couple of years with our district improvement plan, because we're proud of it. When we look at our advanced placement enrollment, that's the blue bar line that continues to go up, and also the number of students who are earning three, four, or five, which depending on the college they're going to attend, can earn college credit for them. We always like to look back at our historical enrollment. And generally, we will start by looking at 15 years, we'll go back 15, and then we'll project five or 10 years out, just to have an understanding of where we have been and where we are going. And this year, I tasked the staff, and particularly Jan Burns, I want to say thank you to her, to help me understand as much as anything as a newer superintendent in Fairfield, what does our 50-year history show us? Now, there is a lot on this slide, and those of you that want to study it online or look at a budget book, I think you'll enjoy it after you get to understand it. On the left, what you see are number of students. On the right, you see the number of buildings. And this is important, because we've had a lot of dialogue in the town in this last, especially six months, about closing schools. Do we need to make adjustments because we're nervous about what's happening with enrollment? When you go back and you look at our history, and you look at the elementary, we did have a period in Fairfield where the trough was enormous. And a lot of times, people will talk about when we closed schools, but our enrollment was very different back then than where it is now. And this is important to me as a superintendent, because I don't want to present something to you that if we're having a slight trough in enrollment, and we take a program out, or we're making an adjustment, and then two years later, you turn around and you're putting it back in again. And you'll see the same thing with the high school trend in the middle, and also the middle school. And this just shows you, and again, this is one of those that you'll want to look at after. We started at one time with 15 elementary buildings. We cut that back to eight. And then we ended up having a lot of trailers in this area, and we've been sitting at 11. So again, it is important, because we want to understand the history, and what's really happening with enrollment, and also with our buildings. And you'll see, the high school is the blue line on the bottom. We had a short period where we had one high school. And you look at our middle schools, we actually had some K8 back in this area, but we had three, we went back to two, and then went back to three. But again, look where we are in enrollment, we are nowhere near where we were back in the 80s. And again, this is important, that we also use projections that we feel good about. This is Malone and McBroom information. This is what our elementary looks like going forward for our next 10-year projection. Again, we're in a slow trough right now, so we have to be careful that we are not cutting back too far, because we're going to turn around and trend right back up. When we look at our middle school, we are right now at a high period. If you remember last year, we talked about, we had a large sixth grade. That sixth grade's going to go to seventh grade next year, they'll go to eighth grade, and then you'll see that dip down again. And that's because that large eighth grade will go to high school, smaller sixth grade will be coming in, we'll have a trough for a few years, and it will go back up again. When you look at our high school enrollment, we are going to sit high, because that large middle school group is going to hit the high school. And we want to make sure at high school also, we're not overstaffing as we go towards the next five to seven years. And again, every time we build a budget, we don't want to just think about the current year, we need to be thoughtful, and be thinking about two years, three years, four years, so whatever we put in is sustainable. But high school will follow with that same trough. But you can tell, when you actually look at elementary, middle, and high school overlay, that high school's going to go down, go right back up, middle school, obviously, it's going to go down, you see it coming right back up behind elementary. And although this only goes out 10 years, if your elementary and your middle are going back up, we also know probably what the next 15 years will show for our high school. So how do we go about building the budget? First of all, we have five fixed cost areas this year that were very large. And when we talk about fixed costs, these are things that we do not, we don't have control over these. These are costs that we must pay, they're driven by other factors. We have contracted salaries, pupil personnel services, these are things like OT and PT and benefits, we don't control that. Our transportation costs, we have gone out to bid, this is where we believe transportation will be this year, we don't have a final contract yet. Our tuition costs, just like we raise our pre-K tuition, all of our students who are in other school settings, their tuition goes up annually as well. This year, if we did nothing else to our budget, but said, let's just add in the fixed cost, that would be $5.3 million. We also have four new budget challenges. And new budget challenges, these are things that occurred during the school year, after the budget passed last spring. We have some DDS-DCF placements, that was 411,000, and that means those are students who are unanticipated to be in the system. We have our Medicaid, this is a requirement now. It passed in October, we had until December 1st to put that in place. So that's another position that must be in our budget this year that was unplanned. Our current CLC and ECC staffing, when the year started, when we got into the summer, our enrollment showed us, we needed an additional CLC program, we also needed an additional early childhood section, and that cost was right around $400,000. Again, unplanned, based on enrollment and need. Team mentoring came out of also the state budget. It was defunded, and although it's 27,000, it's just another cost that was unanticipated for school districts. And if you were looking in the paper, just last Sunday, they had an article about this. We also will be having another, we just found out, almost $9,000 charge just to access the web-based system that you need in order to operate the team system. Again, these total challenges were 893,000. So if you take the fixed cost, and it's unanticipated, that's $6.2 million, if we don't do anything So let's look at budget reductions and adjustments, because it would be irresponsible for us to look at our budget with a fine-tooth comb. First of all, we go in and look at retirement analysis. We talked about this last year, actually made some people nervous last year, because we were using a new calculation. And thank you to Dr. Rasmussen for doing this for us, this work for us. He was 100% accurate last year, as nervous as it made everybody feel. And this year, there's a chart to actually explain it, which is very helpful. You look at 0 to 100%, that's the likelihood that somebody will retire. You can obviously see the ages, 50 to 90 across the bottom, and of course, the likelihood to retire increases as people grow older within the system. So we actually look at our actual staff, we run the probability at every age that somebody will retire. We look at how many employees are at that level, and then we determine, and this year that number is 19. So we have built in 19 retirements this year. We also make budget adjustments. This year, our tuition number to Bridgeport was down, so we were able to take that 75,000, and that actually 75,000 helped offset special education tuition in this 1819 budget. Looking at capital, we are still very focused on technology in this budget, but you'll see there is a large reduction in one area. Our site supplies and materials. What we did this year in building this budget, we are site-based budgeting, which means we have 17 school sites, they all have a budget, and they plan how they want to spend that within their buildings. We started out by a reduction of 20% at all of our school site budgets. They're still site-based budgeting, but then we've taken this to be able to reinvest in other areas that we need to continue to go forward in part of the district improvement planning. Our staff retirements, just at 19, calculates to 760,000. Also, our principals and their site-based budgeting, there was a Also, our principals and their site-based budgeting, there was a deduction of about $59,000 just in conferences and travel. So we managed to find about $1.8 million just in budget adjustments. So what are some of the program improvements that we have planned for the budget this year? Staff have worked very hard, because we feel like we have a responsibility to bring you a budget that is understanding of the climate and the time that we're in, but also to bring you a budget that is going to keep our school system strong, and enhancing and supporting the district work that we have planned to do, and that we need to do for our children. We are implementing in this budget an ELL Academy. We talked about that during our student achievement presentation earlier this year. Again, we know we have 261 students, and out of those students, in Fairfield, 44% of those students are at Level 1 and 2, which means virtually they do not speak English. And our Fairfield Academy will be very focused on our Level 1 students who need intensive English instruction, and this is at elementary, middle, and high. We also have special education and student support programs in the budget this year. We need a middle school complex learner classroom, and this is going to be based at Tomlinson. This is based again on enrollment, need, and numbers. We are adding an elementary complex learner classroom for social-emotional. This would be at Riverfield. And again, this has been a request of our staff for several years, because we haven't had this program, and there's a great need for it. In our high school intensive support program, this is what we've called ESS for the last, I believe, two years, maybe three, this is our third year. And this year, we are moving that program to a Fairfield program, partnering with consultants from Yale, who are working with our staff. We also have a K-12 focus on social-emotional development. The board have heard me mention DBT, staff know it by DBT. They are very excited about this. And I will say, we'll have special education staff here next week, just to answer questions you may have about any of these programs, because we know that they're important to our school system, and you want to hear from our staff. We are reconfiguring positions to enhance opportunity. We are eliminating in this budget the instructional improvement teacher position. And I just want to say, if there's somebody's position that's mentioned in the budget, they know, that we have talked to them, so it's not a surprise tonight. We are eliminating the instructional improvement teacher position, but we're doing that because we want to create 11 elementary program facilitators. And we feel like this is going to be a wonderful position for our elementary schools. These are full-time, they're not administrative, but they are leadership positions. It's an opportunity for leadership growth, for growing some of our own staff into future principalships, and people that have an interest in doing that. But more than anything, this is going to help our elementaries provide consistency across 11 schools for special education, for scheduling, for SRBI, and more. And as you know, we are a district that we do not have assistant principals in elementary. And if you stop and think about having 400 and 500 children in your building, and trying to run all of the PPTs and scheduling and the components that go on, this is going to be a position that is really, we feel like, going to have an enormous impact, not only in consistency, but just support in the buildings. We have a focus on STEAM K-12. I would say that's probably an overarching theme more than anything in this budget. And just for those of you that may be new to STEAM, that's science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. And I think we all know, again, how strong we are in the arts. We have really focused on math the last couple of years, and are getting some wonderful results there. This budget is more focused on science, technology, and engineering. As you remember, last year, we wanted to implement our new high school courses and materials to support our next-generation science standards. We were not able to do that in the budget, but also, not just because of funding, which was a challenge, but when the materials really weren't available, we felt like we needed to wait another year. This year, we are investing $625,000 in our high schools to implement next-generation science standards. And we'll be excited to present those courses to the board later in the spring. We also, in this budget, are proposing a new elementary STEAM program. And this is to infuse inquiry on the rotation for third, fourth, and fifth grades. Science is an area that we know that we need more focus in elementary. We do have new curriculum that will be coming in elementary. This is actually to get ahead of that. As an elementary teacher, you can only teach so much and do so much. And we've asked a tremendous amount of our teachers, so do we just not introduce our elementary students to STEAM for the simple reason that we're overloaded, or do we come up with a new model? And we are coming up with a new model this year that we think is going to be highly effective, and allow our children to be exposed to STEAM. The other thing about adding STEAM in elementary, and you'll notice this is kind of a theme throughout the budget, just to enhance equity and access for all students in science, technology, and engineering. And I just looked at one component, and that was computer science. And if you wait to really introduce computer science when students are in high school, it's too late, unless they happen to come from a family that allows them to have that exposure. That's another reason we think it's really important that we enhance our elementary science. The other thing that I found interesting is that we do have somewhat of a gender gap. And I believe in Fairfield, we can close the gender gap. And I pulled these courses, Computer Games, Computer Science Principles, Computer 10, 20, 30, and 40. And what you'll see is we have 156 males and 12 females. This is from 3,000 high school students. This starts at elementary. They have to believe, our young women have to believe, that this is something they can do. So after I pulled the computer science, the next thing I really wanted to look at is, are we having a gender gap in mathematics as well? We've put a lot of time and effort in math, how are we doing there? So we went and pulled all of our Fairfield Calculus students. And what I was pleased to see, it doesn't exist in mathematics, which tells us, we've done some great work to develop our boys and our girls all the way through our system in mathematics. How can we do that in computer and engineering and science? And again, this is not a typical, what you would see in a school district. That gender gap in mathematics usually exists in most school districts. And it's, ours actually, interesting enough, we were greater than 50% with young women who are in calculus, and we should celebrate that. We want to have enhanced technology access for middle school and high school. We want more access for our students, and we want more access for our teachers. We are targeting this year, 7th grade, working with the principals and the 7th grade teams across all three buildings, to be able to make sure that we have more access. Not where a teacher has to wait to sign up for a cart, and she can't get it, or he can't get it, but also just to make sure that we can start being more reliant on 21st century instruction. We are targeting social studies and science at high school. Obviously, makes a lot of sense at high school in science with us rolling out next-generation science standards. The main thing in enhancing STEAM, which includes technology, is we want to make sure our kids have soft skills, that they're collaborating, they're creating, creating in multiple different ways. It's not about a tool, we know it's about the instruction. And when we surveyed our teachers, and these are actually comments from our high school teachers, there were just a lot of wonderful comments. Yes, do this, please, that person wrote that in caps, just like that. There were several teachers that talked about wanting to do more computer simulations, they'd like the opportunity to do that with our students. Right now, they really can't, they don't have the access. Probably one of the ones I thought was most interesting is this one. The achievement gap is a myth, and this is coming again from our staff. We have an opportunity gap, a resource gap, and this would narrow the gap, just to have more access for our students. And we had teachers who talked about, they want a paperless classroom, they want to be able to teach in a different way, and in a 21st century way. Our elementary gifted education, we want, as we reconfigure, you're noticing there are several different positions that we're reconfiguring. We want to take our gifted services, and we're going to coordinate with that STEAM position, so the program is more consistently staffed, and that teachers actually have more time to teach. Right now, our gifted is coupled with various positions, but like IIT, so it's very difficult for somebody to be in a quasi-leadership role for part of the day, then to switch and try to plan and prepare for gifted curriculum. And this allows our STEAM and our gifted program to really infuse our elementary school in a very strong way. So we are doing a lot with this budget to move us forward with our district improvement plan, and to make sure that what we are doing with our schools is going to keep us 21st century, and really move us forward in the areas where we feel like we need to move. And in order to do that, we feel like we have put together a very responsible budget. You're going to look at the pie chart, which has not changed a great deal. Your staff salaries, you'll see your benefits, it's still the vast majority of the pie graph. When you actually look at the numbers, what you'll see, again, is all of these areas at the top, staff salaries, benefits, these are things we don't control. When you look at the things we do control down at the bottom, most of those are relatively flat. The way that we are moving our budget forward, and that we are able to move our programs forward, is by utilizing our funds differently and more effectively. And this budget is a very responsible, respectful budget. Staff salaries and benefits are 3.2 million of the total increase, which is 1.9%, which is actually a lower percentage staff and salary benefits than normal. The total increase that we're requesting in this proposed budget is 3.1%. So going forward, the budget will be online tonight, the entire budget book, by about 10 o'clock. We do have a brown bag this Friday in this room at 10 o'clock. Next Tuesday, the next two weeks, we will be meeting in here for budget meetings, and going virtually line by line, whatever the board wants to review. The board is, the planned approval is on January 25th. There is also a budget town hall planned on January 31st. And then the following months, we will obviously be with Board of Selectmen. RTM is where we will end up. Board of Finance, we will visit them in the next coming months, with the RTM at 7:30 on May 7. And it's a long process in the spring, but it's well worth it, because it's all about our children. So thank you very much, and it was a delight putting this budget together, and we feel like we're doing a lot for our children and our staff. Thank you.
So we'll wait for the books to be delivered before we go into Q&amp;A from the board. Since we do have several new board members, our, I think your name is on each book. We generally ask general questions that get surfaced as a result of looking at the PowerPoint, but you're welcome to ask any question that you wish. We do ask board members, and really do encourage them, to spend the next couple of nights looking at the budget book, writing down questions. And if you could, it would be good if on Thursday or Friday, you got a list of questions sent to the superintendent, so that the staff have time to research them and get answers for the following Tuesday's meeting. That does not mean that if you don't get it in by Thursday or Friday, you can ask questions at Tuesday. Just remember that if you ask questions the night of the meeting, frequently, a response will be, well, let me get back to you as I do the research. So you will help get answers to your own questions quicker, and you'll help the staff if you can get questions in earlier. And if that means you look at half the book and send in the questions for the first Tuesday meeting, and then the other half of the book for the next Tuesday meeting, that would be good. Our general format is that we walk through the book on a methodical basis, and so as we send out an agenda that says, these are the pages we'll cover for next Tuesday, just focus your conversation and discussion on those pages, so that we have staff here that will cover those pages, and we're not suddenly going from page 2, and then to page 160, and then back to page 40, and then up to page 150. And so we try to go through on a methodical basis, and that helps from a time perspective. We will meet, and generally around 9:00, 9:15. We take a temperature of where we are. We have generally tried to finish the discussion around 10 o'clock, but our board allows us to speak, to meet until 11:00. So we'll meet as long as the majority of the board wishes to meet. Any further comment that you wish to make, Dr. Jones?
No, and I know we'll be sending an agenda out, just, we are hoping to focus our next meeting definitely on special education and curriculum, because we have a lot of our special educators that are planning on coming.
So having said that, any questions that come from board members now, that they'd like to address, or any comments on questions that they might have? Mr. Peterson?
Thank you very much for your presentation, it was excellent. And this book is very thick and intimidating. I'm sure I'm going to have many more specific questions, but I wonder if you could start by just outlining briefly about the ELL Academy. We had, that had come up earlier, and I thought that was still kind of in the conceptual stages, I didn't know that we had come up with any.
Yeah, and if I might, we're not really prepared tonight to fully answer questions. I could have a stab at it. I would rather have that one next Tuesday, and let the team talk about it, so we can make sure they're all here, because they've done a lot of planning for that.
No, that's fine, I appreciate that.
Okay, yeah.
But that would be an example of, if you have a question, state it now, and that gives the team more time to research, and it might be a question that Dr. Jones can answer quickly from, from just her general knowledge. Other questions that board members have? Mrs. Maxon Connell?
Okay, so I have six, and I'm fine with them being put off, but I'll just shoot them out. I just wanted one follow-up on Mr. Peterson's, without any other details. Is that, is the ELL Academy, ELL Academy, is that meant to be in a specific location? Is that the idea?
It actually involves three support positions, and utilizing three of our current ELL teachers that are already based at specific sites.
Okay, all right.
But I can clarify, will the program be delivered at all elementary schools, and they'll travel around, or is it at three particular sites?
That's what I was, that's what I was wondering, thank you. Secondly, just so I can be, just so that I'm clear, is the ESS now eliminated? So we are no longer paying for that service?
Currently for this, this year?
No, 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 I mean, from the budget.
Yeah, what you'll see in the budget is that we have two choices. We would either need to re-contract with them or another company, and keep it in a consulting line, or it'll show up in the salary line, and there's five positions that actually are in the salary line. It will be more cost-effective, actually, in the long run, to have our own program, but we've had to take that out of consult, and you put that in salary. And you'll probably be able to see that, and if not, that can be a question we can answer, to show you where it is in the budget.
Okay. I was wondering, in the, and obviously looking ahead, hopefully it'd be easy for me to find, but with that Medicaid staff position, do we have any sense yet of the revenue that will maybe be produced from that staff position?
In the budget, we've put in $100,000.
Okay. The, just so I'm clear about the elimination of the instructional improvement, so that was, because we had two per elementary, I mean, for math and for language arts, correct? So those two are eliminated, and now it will be one, is the idea?
No, that's a different position. IIT was a position of its own.
Right, okay. Oh, and then my question regarding this, and actually, I'll eliminate the other one. Last question, regarding being ready with sped and curriculum, would you be able to then tell us, maybe shoot us an email in the next couple of days, and say, and therefore, could you please especially look at these pages? Because that's not how I'm accustomed to preparing my questions. I would do it, you know, Mr. Dwyer would say, we're going to do pages 1 through 60 of these sections, and if I need to, or all of us need to prepare differently to make the best use of staff, if we could get some direction on, please especially look at these pages, that would be helpful.
So yes, for existing board members who are accustomed to the last five or six years where we've gone through, like, page 1 to 50 and whatnot, Dr. Jones is planning on presenting it a little bit differently, so don't just get the agenda and think you know what it says because of past history. Take a look at it, and it will show you what topics we're going to be covering.
So when we get the electronic copy Thursday night of the agenda, that will be the answer to my question?
This coming Thursday, I think so.
Okay.
That's my anticipation, yes. Mrs. Jacobson?
The supplies and materials reduction of $375,000, is that in addition to the 20% reduction you've already, or is that, that is the number that represents that?
It is.
And that is up to each site to determine how they make those reductions?
Right, we do have site-based budgeting, so what will happen is you might have one department, or one teacher, for whatever their area was, they might have had a $2,000 budget, so that was reduced 20%, if that's what the principal decided to do. It was actually at the principal's discretion. Some of them may have reduced more professional development, some may have chosen to do supplies and materials. It really is driven by what the principal deems appropriate.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, I was saying addition.
And again, for the benefit of new board members, you will look and suddenly say, well, how come the high school spends X amount on this line, but the other high school spends a great deal less? And that's because of site-based budgeting. The staff, under the leadership of the headmaster or principal, says, here's where our staff want to allocate it. And so they make their individual, school-based decisions, and that is frequently what causes the variations from one school to the other. the variations from one school to the other. Other questions that you have, Mrs. Jacobson?
No, thank you. I'm good.
Other questions? Mrs. Gerber?
I think I actually have the answer to this question, but I just wanted to clarify. I think I might have misheard. Dr. Jones said something about the, the budget going to town hall, and I thought that was like a town hall meeting, but you're just saying the budget's going to town hall on January 31st, correct? That we're not having a town hall meeting on January 31st.
Okay. Mr. Dreyer says correct.
Yeah, no, it has to be delivered to the first selectman's office.
Exactly. No, and I just heard town hall, and I thought, wait, we're having a town hall. So I just wanted to clarify, because we are in fact having a town hall in February for the board, which I'm assuming will be on the budget, but I just wanted to clarify that that, that is not that. That is just getting it physically to town hall by the 31st. Okay, thanks.
We, Mrs. Gerber points out something important. There is a town hall meeting sponsored by the Board of Education in February, whose intent is scheduled in that month so that you might ask questions about the budget, but we will continue with the program, facilities, and budget finances, agenda items, so that the member of the public who actually wanted to come and talk about a facility question would be eligible to do that. But we certainly do expect most of the questions to come out about the budget. Other questions, Mrs. Gerber? Other questions or comments from board members? I have patience, so I'm waiting to see if there's anybody that does. And could you clarify the budget books that normally have been printed and distributed to the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and RTM? When will those be at town hall for distribution to those three bodies?
They will be distributed tomorrow.
Okay. And then generally, PTA budget reps are offered an opportunity to have them, and will those be available for the Friday brown bag lunch, or what, what will you be doing with that?
It will be as quick as we can get them off the printer, actually. That was a little bit of a struggle as far as timing, especially being out Thursday and Friday. And we still have a lot of staff that work Thursday and Friday, but we're working on that. We also worked with our PTA to make sure they, they have, this year, worked with us, and they're getting one for the PTA president, and then if they want a second one, they're gonna copy that themselves for each site.
Okay. So we're expecting one per PTA?
Yes.
Okay. And I think my last question for clarification slipped out of my mind for a moment, so let me see if there's anything else that people want to ask, or comments that people wish to make. Having none, I will join Mr. Peterson in thanking the staff for their hard work. Bringing a budget in at roughly 3% is an achievement. This board will have to go through the next couple of three weeks to look at the budget, and it may be that information comes forward in the next week or two that will allow us to further tighten the budget, and hopefully we won't get information that suddenly blows the budget out and we have to increase it. But we have in this town, it kind of adopted a principle that says, "We budget based on the best available information at the time the budget has to be presented, and if we get new information in the course of, of the week or the month, that we bring that forward to the Board of Ed, or to the Board of Selectmen, or to the Board of Finance, or to the RTM, so that they can act based on the best available information, which we know changes from the end of the year, which is essentially these numbers, and the end of April, which is when the RTM has to vote." And we do encourage all board members to, to be present at the Joint Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance budget hearing, as well as the RTM budget hearing, to, to support whatever budget this board eventually moves forward. It's called the superintendent's budget at the moment, but on the day we vote it, the cover will change, and it becomes the Board of Education budget that we are advocating to the town to support the education of 10,000 students. Going, going, gone. Last bit for comments. Having heard none, we will move on to the next item on our agenda. Oh, that's what I wanted to remember. Please do send in questions in advance. It is very helpful. And also, you will find on our website a list of questions and answers from over the last two or three years. Frequently, you will find, while the numbers might change, the essence of your question that as a new board member you might ask, has been asked in the past, and if you read through those Q and As, that also helps you understand the budget. So thank you for that. Now, now on to move on to new business. Approval of the collective bargaining agreement. Oh, no, capital budgets next. Thank you. Onto old business. We have two capital budget questions, so we'll deal with them one at a time, and that's 6A, approval of the 2018-2019 BOE capital projects budget. That the board of, the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the 2018-19 capital projects. Do I have a motion? Ms. Pitco, seconded by Mrs. Gerber. These were presented at our last meeting. We had some questions at that time, but are there any further questions? And this is a voting item, so we will go to the public for comment. Any questions from board members on the capital budgets? Mrs. Gerber, and followed by Mrs. Maxon Canelli?
Well, I guess first, just one question. Should we go in order, in which case would Sherman go first? Any questions from Sherman? Or can we ask questions about it? Because I have a couple of Mill Hill questions, but if people wanted to ask the Sherman questions first, since that's first in the book.
Probably one project at a time. Okay, so we'll go with one project at a time. And so the first one that is?
So I would ask the Mill Hill questions first then?
Yeah, Mill Hill first.
Yeah. So I guess my, my question is, and I guess this would be through the chair to Mr. Cullen, just in terms of the request, so it's the 1.5 million dollar request that we're getting for the preliminary funding for Mill Hill for an expansion slash renovation, although we're not quite sure of the scope of that expansion renovation at this point. But the 1.5 million dollars, I guess my, my question is, and I think I know the answer, but I just wanna make sure that I have this straight. So regardless of what the end product ends up being, whether we end up having a 504 at Mill Hill, or a 441, or a 378, or any other number, regardless of what that final project ends up being a few years down the road from now, whenever that is decided by staff and the Board of Education, when they vote on the ed specs, this 1.5 million dollars should be 1.5 million dollars irregardless of what the final size of the Mill Hill project ends up being. So I guess, for instance, you know, let's just say, for the sake of argument, that we decide, you know, we don't need to add anything on. We're gonna get rid of the five portables. It's gonna be a 378-capacity school, although there are still a number of other things that need to be taken care of, you know, for instance, air conditioning and cafeteria, you know, library media center, all of those things, regardless of the general classroom space. So if we said we want to do a 378 school, get rid of the portables, and do the interior work, this 1.5 million dollars still is the right number to have, as opposed to if we say down the road, "You know what? We need to do a 504." So either way, what the final project is, isn't related directly to, this 1.5 million dollars is the same regardless of what the final Mill Hill project is. I'm...
Yes, I mean, the smaller the project...
And again, introduce yourself.
Yes, Executive Director of Operations, Tom Cullen. Yes, that amount is the initial seed money that the building committee will need. If the project team finds that we, the Board of Ed is accepting a smaller enrollment projected building, those costs might be a little less, but certainly any money not used, the building committee would give back to the town. So if it ends up being, you know, 1.39 million that they need, because it's a smaller scope project.
Which we don't know at this point, because basically what we're voting on right now has nothing to do with the size of the Mill Hill product, project.
Correct.
I mean, I know you mentioned about numbers going really, really high, and concerns, and whether or not we need to do anything in terms of, you know, the enrollment numbers and whatnot, but that's not what we're discussing and or voting on tonight. This is simply the 1.5 million dollars for the preliminary funding for whatever the Mill Hill project ends up being.
Yep, what the whole project team's gonna need.
And so my question is, just to make it clear, that, you know, should anyone ask, "Well, if you don't even know what the size of the project is, how do you know you need the 1.5 million?" We're saying regardless of what that final project is, no matter what the final size is, this 1.5 million is needed to be able to do the advanced work to determine what the overall scope and funding for the full project will be.
That's correct.
Okay.
In the breakdown in the book that you'll see, we have environmental engineer, structural engineer.
No, no, and I see all of that, but again, just, especially because, you know, the topic came up when you, you mentioned, you know, how you thought the costs for Mill Hill were going to be so much higher than we originally anticipated, and now with enrollment numbers, there were some discussions about whether or not we needed to do a 504. So I guess my question was, because, you know, from 2015 until now, we had basically gone along the, "We're going to do a 504," based on discussions had at the capital planning workshop, based on discussions that we had at this board table. So now this changed, and perhaps scaling it back, which was something that had come up in the past. You know, we have numbers of what a 441 version of Mill Hill would look like. I looked them up, and you gave us handouts a couple of years ago. I still have those. So I guess my thing is, now that we are again kind of coming full circle around and saying, again, we might perhaps be scaling this back, this 1.5 million dollars doesn't need to change. We don't need to say, "Well, we're gonna do a 378, so we really only need 1.2 million dollars for initial funding." You're saying 1.5 is the proper funding regardless of what the final project ends up being.
Yes.
Okay. That's why, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. Thank you.
And for the board's knowledge, it's, when we vote this tonight, if it's approved, it doesn't mean a building committee is appointed tomorrow. It does take a while for this request to work its way through the first selectman, the Board of Selectmen, and the RTM. And so while it is working its way through with a budget that is needed for planning purposes regardless of the size of the building, as Mrs. Gerber has pointed out, we will be having additional conversation so that we can eventually work toward approving a set of ed specs that will then be the driving document for an eventual building committee. So this is not the last time this board will be talking about the questions that Mrs. Gerber mentioned. Mrs. Gerber?
Sorry, just to follow up on that. So I guess my question is now in terms of the whole process, so let's say that this is approved tonight, so then we, a building committee will eventually be formed?
At the discretion of the Board of Selectmen, yes.
Correct. So assuming that, right. So assuming that moves forward, so we approve this, and then the other, the Board of Finance and the RTM also, and the Board of?
Selectmen.
Selectmen, also. They all need to approve this 1.5 million dollar funding.
Correct.
Once that funding is approved, then there will be steps taken to create a building committee.
Correct.
Through the Board of Selectmen and the RTM approval. Now, and forgive me, I can't believe, I, I don't remember this, but, so is, does that happen first, and then we do the ed specs? Or do we do the ed specs and then the building committee? Because I know there's the charge for the building committee, there's the building committee formation, and there are also the ed specs. And I'm just trying to get a sense of, in terms of what the timeline is for this.
Over the 15-year period, that has quite, the answer to that question has changed slightly, but currently, the expectation is that we would produce, we would work on parallel tracks, and that by the time the building committee is actually appointed, either shortly before or shortly after that, we would have a set of ed specs that would get delivered to the building committee.
So it would be, so the discussion regarding the ed specs is when the, when we will actually have to have those conversations regarding the size and scope of Mill Hill?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, if I could just chime in, I think the, the ed specs are important for the first selectman and the Board of Selectmen to write the charge. So I would say that they should work in parallel, and the ed specs are very important.
Okay.
And again, if we ask, the first selectman just says, "Yes, sir," and he acts immediately. Or the first selectman takes time to think whether they're ready to move this project forward exactly at this timeframe. And then the Board of Selectmen sometimes takes time to think about that. They don't act at the very first meeting. And so it's not as though in January we vote, February it goes through Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance, and in March, we have a building committee. It generally takes longer than that. There's no guess as to exactly whether how quickly it will happen, or how long it will take, but that's fully at the discretion of the first selectman to move it forward, the Board of Selectmen to move it forward, and the RTM to approve the building committee. Other questions or comments on the Mill Hill project? Mrs. Maxon Canelli?
Well, my first question was beautifully articulated by Mrs. Gerber, far better than I could have, so I think that's a vital bit of clarification for the public to know that. But a few follow-ups. We did have that public comment question regarding traffic, and yet there is a traffic consultant on here. Just to clarify, is that doing the work that was referenced in public comment, or exactly what is the work of that traffic consultant?
The traffic consultant would be included if the project team looks at where the addition and renovation will go, if the bus loop needs to change, parking lots need to change, then certainly there'd have to be a traffic study to go along with it.
And so that would include surrounding roads?
Correct.
Okay. Then to get back to the question of process, we had, you know, there was a lot of talk when we were doing Holland Hill of how we were fast-tracking that, that this was an urgent need, and, you know, our process slightly changed. Do you see this process, you know, that we've learned from that, and it's an actual model that we can continue with, or do you, do you see this going back to the more conventional? I'm, I'm just curious, how would you, if, if Dr. Jones or Mr. Dreyer, if you have a sense of the process on this one?
It's always dangerous to contemplate the answer to that question. Holland Hill, it worked on a fast track because the Holland Hill enrollment was growing and outstripping that building's capacity, and kids were back in hallways for OT and PT. The Mill Hill building is not as stressed, but certainly, when we start talking about Mill Hill, that is a valid question to ask. How quickly do we need to move this, which then also means, how quickly do we have to advocate for the other town bodies to move it? But at the moment, I'm not seeing the stress on Mill Hill's building as, to be as great as it was on Holland Hill. And hopefully, I won't get a whole lot of emails from Mill Hill parents that say, "I am totally off-base on that."
Okay. And then, secondly, regarding that process, on the topic of Mill Hill families, in terms of their input, you know, for whatever degree, and I'm sure their BOE reps would want to know this, what would be an approximate idea of when this ed spec conversation is likely to get started? In other words, is this a by-June thing, or is this a next-fall topic?
I don't think next fall, but through Dr. Jones to Mr. Cullen, do you have an answer for what you would like?
I'd say by June.
So that's, it is this spring?
It's this spring.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Pitco, followed by Mrs. Vitale.
So my question is actually through the chair to Mr. Cullen. Where are we on state reimbursement? I know we were in a rush to get everything in, in June for Holland Hill. Is there a percentage? Is the state actually reimbursing?
The reimbursement rate from the state changes every year. Very little, but it changes. Fairfield's is running in the 25.4% range, so that's standard. We had approval of the Holland Hill project and accepted by the state. It's not officially in writing and on their schedules in paperwork and charts, but we have it verbally and in discussions with them, so Holland Hill is on the books, as well as some security projects and other things we filed. So we will, we will follow this.
Can I clarify Ms. Pitco's question? Yes, we are authorized for the reimbursement. I think your question is, is the state actually giving us the money? Now, the town manages the project. It is the town's finance department that actually bills out and collects the money, but have you heard anything from the town that suggests that the original 1.24 million planning for Holland Hill, that the town is asking why that hasn't been reimbursed at a reasonable rate?
No. No, we have no reason to believe the state isn't gonna fund Holland Hill at this time.
And fund it on a schedule that they normally and customarily give us the cash?
Correct.
But that would be a question to follow up with the town, to see if they are beginning to see?
Actually...
A delay in state cash reimbursement?
Mr. Chairman, actually, the payment schedules come from our office, so we'll file payment requests as the project's moving along to the state, along with change orders and things that are happening with the project.
But the payment request is not the same as the payment receipt.
Correct.
And so I think that it is still the town that knows when they've gotten the check.
Well, my question was actually addressed more towards Mill Hill. I only brought up Holland Hill because I knew we were in a rush to get that filed by June 30th, because we were worried that the state wasn't going to give us reimbursement. And I know that all sorts of budget issues up... And I know that all sorts of budget issues up there, but are there any indication that they're not going to be reimbursing if we move forward on any capital projects?
We haven't notified them about Mill Hill yet. Our first notification will be once the board of ed accepts the project, does the ed spec, and we file what's called an EDO 49 form to the state, and then that's when they accept the project. So they don't know about Mill Hill yet.
But I believe the Holland Hill and other projects, smaller projects, have been budgeted for and reported as approved by the state.
That's correct.
Okay. So unless they reneg on to every town that they promised and say, no, we've changed our mind, those two, those projects are in the bag.
We were very surprised and lucky to hear about some of the security projects we submitted that they accepted.
Ms. Pitco, other questions? To follow up, Ms. Vitale, do you mind if Mr. Acer?
Maybe Ms. Pitco can clarify, but I believe what she may have been going for was, we got the approval in before June 30th for Holland Hill to get the current reimbursement rate, which we were worried was going to go down significantly. As of July 1st, did that rate go down? The published rate?
No. No, it has not gone down. We also got it in the books because we didn't know if the state was going to stop reimbursement on projects.
Okay, so that fear?
And June 30th is their cutoff.
So that fear for the time being has subsided?
Correct.
Thank you.
The other purpose of June 30th is that if you don't get it in by June 30th, you have to wait a year till they authorize them again. So, so you use a year in cash reimbursement opportunities. So there's two reasons to get in by June 30th. That's one, and the second is in case they change the rate, which is a legislative change, not an administrative change. Again, following up on that same question, Ms. Vitale, do you mind?
I'll be quick, I promise. Well, just to that point, when you're talking about the June 30th deadline, which we always, you know, have to keep in mind, that June 30th deadline is not the board of education approving something by June 30th. That is the RTM, which means you have to start counting backwards to know that the RTM, the board of finance, and the board of selectmen all need to approve the project before June 30th to lock into that funding for the next year. So, which means that for us to approve the ed specs, we're really kind of looking at starting in March, basically, to allow for any changes that we may make because we have a first read, then we will vote, then it will go to the other town bodies, and there's no guarantee that they are going to have it on the agenda and vote on it in the exact same meeting. So plus, you've got committee meetings for RTM and whatnot, so basically, the clock is, is ticking.
Is ticking.
Yes.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Now, Ms. Vitale.
Well, thank you, because that's just like the perfect entry point for, I guess my question is more about process. And in looking at ed specs with Mill Hill, there's been a lot of information tied to Mill Hill. We have a redistricting, I mean, for the racial imbalance, a redistricting plan is out there that, if memory serves, needed Mill Hill to be built to a 504. We have scenarios out there from Melinda McBroom, if we want to explore closing an elementary school, that Mill Hill needs to be built to a 504. We now have a bigger price tag possibly for Mill Hill to be a 504, and questions about the site. So I guess I'm kind of wondering about staging. I feel like I, before doing ed specs, I would like more information about the site. Is there any way that some of this work could be done outside of a building committee? You know, there's a geotech engineer, there's a surveyor. Could that work be done? I mean, I'm not a, you know, I'm not a construction expert, but would those people be giving you the data that you need to get a better handle of the site? And whether or not it's even feasible to build a 504 school at a price tag that would be palable to other town bodies?
Yes, you could if the board of ed had the funding and the time to put into that investigative work.
In the past, we have done some investigative work and have paid for that out of our operating budget, and once we pay for it out of our operating budget, it's not reimbursable.
Correct.
And so we have tried to limit the amount of investigation work so that it doesn't, and it's an unbudgeted item, so it doesn't take away from budgeted items, but that it's enough to help the board of education say, yeah, let's move this forward.
And I do appreciate that, and I knew that that was the answer, but we're looking to approve, you know, over a million dollars. My fear is that we're going to approve this, work is going to be done, we're spending, you know, budgeting $100,000 more for a consultant that we did for Holland Hill. My, my understanding is because it's a more complex project, I would just hate to see us go down a road only to find out that cost is going to make it prohibitive if we could spend less to get answers sooner, especially if we're looking at doing ed specs in a month and a half. And I don't know, I mean, if it's hundreds of thousands, and I agree, then I would not want to do that. If it's, you know, the engineer and a surveyor, which is $35,000, then maybe that's something that we might want to consider, any, you know. And I don't know. And then that's really a question through Dr. Jones to Mr. Cullen, you know, who would need, who would need to do the work? And how long would it take? Is it, is it a quick answer? You know, do you know I'm trying to, you know?
I know what you're saying.
Like, how, who do you see giving you the information that you need? Is it everybody? Is it?
Most of the work is probably a team of engineers. There were several factors for increasing the initial funding source from Holland Hills. First of all, Holland Hills was originally tabulated in 1415 fiscal year. It was put into the waterfall schedule in 1516. You know, we're looking at this at 1819, almost 2020. There's been no escalation cost for all of those fees, which we should have put 4% on at least. The second things were things we've been learning from the old elementary schools. In the past, when buildings were designed and built, the boiler rooms, you were able to put the water meter in there, the gas meter, the fire pump, they could all be in the boiler room. Now, new codes are telling you that they're better off in their separate rooms, isolated from the boilers and any problems, explosion problems from that design. So we're seeing that, and there's an increase in cost. We're seeing that the systems that are in the ground from the 50s and 60s are now eroding and falling apart and replacing a lot of water lines and gas lines coming into the building. So we looked at all of that. On top of, a lot of the elementary schools didn't have mechanical means of fresh air or air conditioning, and those systems are heavy and weigh a lot, and we're finding that some of our elementary schools don't have the roof structure for those. So structural engineers needed probably to design some extra steelwork. So based on all that, we thought a calculator of 4% escalation in four or five years, we added the $250,000 to that proposal. So I think it's a team of engineers, environmental, structural, underground, that would really need to get their hands into that site.
And I think one of the issues is, I'm not sure this is exactly what you're asking, but if you're saying, is there a 30 or 40 or $50,000 cost that might give us better guidance? And if you said, let's focus on structural, then what would happen is the site work engineering that you didn't do is the issue that is, you're going to face more. And if we chose that, it's the electrical. And so you, there's part of this budget that you're hard-pressed to pick out one piece of it and say, let's get that information and then make a decision based on that. The building committee's purpose is to get all of the information that is from all those development professionals so that they can make a considered decision as to what can, what it will cost to move forward.
And I appreciate that. And I guess it's just really looking at, if we're looking to get ed specs in the next few months, it sort of feels like we need to get information sooner rather than later. And if there was, you know, a $50,000 way of possibly getting that information, I would think that that would be.
Would be money well spent.
It might be money well spent just knowing that, well, there's rock there, there's no way we can make the school bigger for under a certain amount of money.
So I'd ask Mr. Cullen to kind of look at that budget and see if there's a, a question that if we got that answered, it would make the board feel more comfortable as to where they're going forward.
Well, and I do, I mean, I do support this renovation, I want to make that clear. I'm not, you know, in any way not supportive of this moving forward. I just want to make sure that we're being cognizant of the roadblocks that might be, we might be facing sooner rather than later. And also, you know, there's a lot of different factors that might be driving us to what size this school may be. Enrollment, the racial imbalance, and if at the end of the day, it really is just the rock under, you know, then if we can find that out, that, that questions, you know, that might be an easier question to answer than some of the other ones. Thank you.
Mr. Acer, followed by Mrs. Max and Canelli.
I think it's important that we approve this now. Speaking from experience over the last year on the Holland Hill Building Committee, there's a lot of information that's discovered and a whole process that's followed, and I can only say that because I've been through it now. But the bottom line is, as a board, we're going to come up with ed specs based on these different scenarios and inputs you're talking about. And from that point, the building committee is going to have to figure out how they can meet those specs and what type of project and whatnot. So I think, while I understand what you're saying to a point about, you know, trying to figure out things here, I don't think that's necessarily, should be what is driving our ed specs. I think our ed spec should be designed based on what we need them to be for various inputs. And then after that, then the building committee figures out how to make that work. And if the number comes back too high and people balk and it comes back to the building committee, then the building committee then works on trying to figure it out like the Holland Hill Building Committee did and cut a couple million dollars out, but still meet the ed specs. So I just wanted to add that, that I think it's important that we, we move forward here. That's just my opinion.
If I could just comment one. The ed specs, when you start reading them, building after building after building after building, as those of you who have followed it, regardless of the size of the building, the ed specs are the same. What should a kitchen look like? What should classrooms look like? What should the AP room look like? What should the hallways look like? What is the specification for the lights in the classrooms or the hallways? And whether it is 20 classrooms or 24 classrooms, those specifications are the same. Really, the principal difference is what spaces need renovation in one building versus another? And how many classrooms are you putting together so that you define the 504 or the whatever number? And then that's what drives the ed specs more than the kind of the standard specs that are, must be put in there for every building. Mrs. Max and Canelli.
To that point, though, I agree with Mrs. Vitale that we're looking potentially at really making a blind decision this spring. If we went, if the ed specs were, are this spring, it's the addition, which is what the entire, no one, I don't think debates, I've, I've not heard one voice against renovation. I think, you know, the ed specs, that, the hallway, the designs, you know, have at it, have fun, design. But the renov, the addition is what the entire debate is going to be around. And if I'm reading the detailed description correctly on page nine, that this project team to provide design development drawings and specifications for cost estimates, the very information that Mrs. Vitale is looking for, we can't possibly get without that 550,000 or whatever dollar investment. We can't possibly have that information accurate until next school year. So we're going to be doing ed specs truly blind, I mean, because we're talking about a difference of, you know, Holland Hill in the neighborhood of 18 million. We were just quoted 25 million based on a 504. This is a, this isn't just a, let's shave, and I know Holland Hill, it wasn't easy to shave one to two million, and they did it well. We're talking about, no, we need you to shave seven million. And it entirely rests on the issue of the addition or not. I think that's how most of us view it. And so I'm not saying any of this with a proposal in mind, but is it the sort of thing where this could be of such a financial magnitude that we have no business talking about ed specs until the results of this team's work come in? Now, I don't like the idea of delay. I don't think anyone here likes the idea of delay, but we're talking a $7 million difference from Holland Hill. And can we possibly have that ed specs discussion without the result of, I mean, we keep talking about engineers, all of which, I assume all of which, you know, are part of these budgeted items for the almost 600,000. So I'll just repeat my question. Can we even talk about it?
I'll say the answer is yes, and I can talk about it. I think Mr. Acer answered the question perfectly. Unless you spend, spend a million-five to get all of the answers that you want, you won't be able to make a decision. No, no, let me finish.
You're missing my point.
No, I don't think I am. You won't be able to make a decision because it is the collective team of all the development professionals that get you the information as to whether we're talking about a $9 million project or a $20 million project. And if the decision is based on how much it's going to cost, you have to spend a lot of money to get to a good number.
That did miss my point, though, because I completely agree with you and I completely agree with Mr. Acer. I wholeheartedly support, I'm not questioning the 1.5. I'm questioning the next step of a March or April discussion of ed specs without the results of the report of this 1.5. That's my hesitation, is that how can we have that discussion until we know what they say? I completely support this investment. It's the next step I'm questioning.
The building committee will ask us, 378 or 504? So if you're saying we can't give the answer to that until we spend the 1.5?
I'm asking.
I think we have to make that decision. And that decision, I think, is based on enrollment demands, not on what it costs. I believe it's, we are, my personal opinion, we are a board that is advocating for the needs of our students, and if the needs of our students in that area of town says that we need a 462 school, we should be advocating for a 462 school. Not exactly regardless of the cost, but knowing what it generally costs to build a school of 21 classrooms, we have a pretty good idea of what a classroom costs. What we don't have a good idea of, and which we need development consultants for, is what is the engineered site work that is needed? We were totally off at Riverfield, totally off at Holland Hill, but that is not a 30 or 40 or $50,000 question. There's a multiple of engineering professionals that are needed by a building committee to get an answer to that question. So in a range of, if we put 21 classrooms or 24 classrooms, could Mr. Cullen say, based on what it generally costs us to build a classroom, here's the difference that you're talking about? And when we were talking about Holland, a different board, when we were talking about Holland Hill and/or Mill Hill and looking at, should it be 504 or 462, Mr. Cullen had given us a chart that said, based on three fewer or four fewer classrooms, here's what it's likely to cost. Those numbers are pretty good. The site work, the, the engineering part of it, those were.
Building codes, life safety codes, fire codes.
Life safety codes, those were.
Soon as you touch that building, all of those things have to be brought up to code. And it's an old building.
So those are the numbers that we probably won't have because if we spend a million-five, that's a million-five out of our operating budget and not state reimbursed. And I know that's not what you mean, but, but we have to, I personally think we need to advocate for the building we need for that part of town based on our best judgment of the size of the school and let the building committee take it from there. Personal opinion. Other questions? Mrs. Gerber, followed by Ms. Vitale.
Well, I just, and I don't want to belabor the point because I think we all agree that the 1.5 is, is something that we all feel fine with voting in favor of, I believe. But I, I think the problem is, is that a month ago, we were given a statement saying that a project that we'd been told a year ago, not even a year ago, in August, was going to be 18.7 million dollars, is now possibly going to be as much as 25 million dollars. And, and just a year before that, it was 15 million dollars. So it's really gone off the rails potentially. Those numbers are very scary, and I think especially in this climate, we have to be very cognizant of that. So I don't think we'd be having this conversation tonight if it wasn't for the fact that we had been told that from August 2017 to December of 2017, the potential cost of a project went from 18.7 million to 25-plus million. That's, I think that's where our concern is coming from, that this has happened very quickly. And that we, I mean, I have plans going back to 2011 here. I mean, Mill Hill's been going on and on and on, and, and the numbers have basically stayed the same. In fact, some of the numbers, I was curious because the cafeteria bump out- In fact, some of the numbers, I was curious because the cafeteria bump out and the LMC bump out haven't changed, those amounts haven't changed at all, as opposed to the air conditioning has doubled. It started out at $750,000 in 2012, and now it's up to 1.5 million. But but now we have this additional kind of amorphous $7 million cost that we don't really know what it's from. And I know we said it's a tight site and there's ledge, but we have quotes from meetings back in 2015 that said it's a tight site and there, there is ledge and there's chlorine. So this is not as if it's some new discovery. And I understand that there is more complexity to it than that, but I just think it's important to recognize the fact that we're talking about an enormous shift in the cost of this project that happened relatively recently. So I think that's why we're having this conversation.
Mrs. Vitale. Oh, Ms. Pitco, did I skip over you? No? Okay.
And I think that really just, and that is my concern, really, because it, I've been, I've been on, not sat on building committees, but I was the PTA president, we went through a lot of those buildings, I saw things pop up, and you advocate for the students and for the building, but there's a difference. $7 million, that money's going to come from someplace else. We can advocate for it at Mill Hill, but I think that to do our due diligence, we need to appreciate that it's going to have effects on other projects, that other renovations and other students are going to be affected, quite possibly more students than the, you know, 400 students at Mill Hill. And I don't mean that, you know, that came out wrong.
You'll get your own set of news.
It came out wrong. I just think that we need to look at it district-wide and the effect that it has on the town as a whole and other projects that come after Mill Hill and the Capitol waterfall. And if it's a simple, I started this out really not questioning the project or the 1.5, really just asking if it's a question of rock and the ledge, and maybe just answering, a quick way of answering the question, is this the best site for a 504? Or are there other, there's Dwight, which is still that side of town somewhat, bordering neighborhoods, and I'm not trying to push for renovation at Dwight, but if adding space there might be less expensive just due to the topography of the land, then I would just be curious to know that, trying to find the most cost-effective way to serve as many students as possible. That's, that's a lot.
I would tell you, it's not just the rock and the ledge at Mill Hill site.
Okay.
There's many other factors.
But these are all valid questions, and in the run-up to setting ed specs, they're going to have to get answered with the best available information we have and choosing the size of the school that we want to push forward. Mr. Acer, you had another question?
Quick follow-up. Regarding the increase that we talked about at that meeting where you sent out that hypothetical 20-25 million.
And thank you very much for that.
I know, that's the second time you thank me.
But I actually do have a pointed question. Was 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 that a, like, a realistic number for adding like they have at Riverfield or Holland Hill, we're expanding the footprint? Or hypothetically, if that school went to two stories and the footprint wasn't expanded, do you have a cost estimate? Is it as high for that versus expanding the footprint?
Some of that. I think the superintendent and I talked about it, and we thought it has the potential to be a very expensive project, based on what we saw that happened at Stratfield, Riverfield, and Holland Hill. If it's going to be a 504 design, if there are going to be a lot of site implications, if the roof can't support the mechanical means of fresh air and air conditioning, if all these things all come together as one big project, it has the potential to be very expensive.
Okay, but if it-
That's what we wanted to get out there.
Okay, so that's all talking about the roof, but I'm talking about a second floor, which eliminates the roof and you have a new roof and whatnot. So if it were not expanding the footprint, like it sounds like you're talking about now, could it potentially be considerably less?
I don't know that at this time, but-
Because I think that's an important question.
Yeah, I'm thinking-
Usually the structural steel overrides the roof when you go up a story.
Yeah. I mean, I'm even thinking-
Steel that you need to go up a story for the second floor.
He's thinking, take off the roof.
Well, I'm thinking, expanding the footprint and blasting rock and everything, is, could potential, what my question is, could potentially going to a two-story building there save considerably based on the lack of necessary site work that may be needed for an expansion?
Not always, because you're usually then adding an elevator, you're adding staircase-
Okay, so the answer is, we don't know.
Yeah, we don't.
Okay.
Before I get back to you, Ms. Jacobson, did you want to make a comment?
No.
Okay. Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
Just one very quick question, since we keep saying it, and I have to ask. Is there a reason necessarily that the air needs to go on the roof? I mean, I know it would be ugly and, you know, would we would want it and, you know, put something around it so that it wasn't visible and that children weren't playing around it, but in fact, does it actually have to be on the roof?
Based on the design of the building, it normally is, because it's so spread out and long.
I know normally, does it need to be?
No, but it could be more costly if it's on the ground. Generally, you're popping, you know, you put a unit on the roof, you pop down through the roof into a corridor, you run the corridor, and you try and pick up six, seven classrooms with duck work, then you put another unit on. That's usually how it's done in a long elementary-type school building.
Sorry.
It's not the last question, but go ahead.
Are we, are we talking now about working on ed specs this March?
As soon as this board says, move it forward, Mr. Cullen will start working on ed specs, and as soon as he's finished with them, they'll come to-
So that I do have a concern with because of all of the other things, like the racial imbalance and potentially one day needing a district-wide redistricting from top to bottom, which would hinge on Mill Hill being a 504 likely. So that being said, I would just throw it out there that I caution us to rush into trying to get the ed specs done and putting the cart before the horse with regards to that, which I think Ms. Vitale was getting at, but.
And without belaboring a point, which we have been, I don't think we need to create a redistricting plan in order to make this decision. I think we could say, we're going to build Mill Hill in anticipation that a next number of students are going to have to be moved to that. And once we make that decision, then we say, okay, how do we do the redistricting to move those number of students there? So cart before the horse, chicken and egg, I think they have to have a conversation at the same time. But I think one can follow the other without, you know, having to get every I crossed and every T crossed, but you vote and say, we're going to go in this direction, and this commits us to redistricting, or it commits us to saying, we're not going to. I think we can, could have that conversation. Last question I'll say.
I promise it is my last one. So can this serve as notice to both Dr. Jones and to Mr. Cullen that we're telling you in advance that we're going to want, I will, okay, I'll speak for myself, that I will certainly want that exact same cost breakdown of, you know, 462 versus ever in terms of this size means this. But I would also be looking for direction from Dr. Jones regarding, at this time, with the numbers as she has analyzed, that her staff has looked at, what is the central office and Dr. Jones recommending in terms of the future of the Fairfield School District with regard to that question of redistricting? And while we don't, it doesn't have to be definitive at this time, I would like a staff recommendation or something like that. So that's what I'll put out there.
And that's fair. That's fair. As long as you don't ask us to put a map together that says, here's the line.
Absolutely not.
So last, I did say last comment, but if there's no further comments, we'll go from Mill Hill over to Sherman. And any questions on the Sherman project? As you know, this is the third phase of a multi-phase project. Ms. Vitale.
Just on, at the last meeting, there was some question about whether or not the cost for the air conditioning would be, I guess, for the value of this project, or it could be put towards the last project, whether or not that figure is going to be in the calculation.
Correct. It was my opinion, as I talked with James Went, that there will be things that are considered maintenance items and will not go towards the FEMA-regulated numbers. I was hoping that the, and my opinion is, that the air conditioning will be deemed a maintenance item.
Just wondering you.
Since the mechanical means of fresh air and the equipment is already there, and we're adding condensing units to air condition it, could be a fine line that that could be a maintenance item being added. So my hope is that that will happen and will be well under the FEMA regulation.
That was, I just wanted to know if you had any more definitive, you know, information on that.
No, I won't until we actually have a project team on board and they present the the items.
Thank you.
Other questions on the Sherman project? Other questions on the Sherman project?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, and if I, somebody asked this question while I was out of the room, I apologize. I just want to clarify, because we have this cap issue with this. So if costs go over and we go over the cap, then what happens?
Regardless of the reason.
Regardless of the reason.
Yeah. What would happen is the, I would imagine the planning and zoning committee of your town would get to us and find out if we wanted to break something out of the project and have to go to Phase Four.
So we could end up potentially, and I'm not saying I want this to happen, but that there could possibly be a Phase Four.
Possible Phase Four, yeah.
Right, if at some point-
I don't see it at this time, based on what's left to do, what will be deemed maintenance. My conversation with James Went already about what's not figured into the FEMA regulation.
Okay.
I think we're in pretty good shape.
Right, but just to be prepared. You know, it's always best to, because things come up, best laid plan, so, okay. Thank you.
Other questions about Sherman? If not, I'll go to the public for this motion, which is for capital projects, both Mill Hill and Sherman, and see if anybody wishes to come forward to speak about the capital projects prior to the vote. If so, please come forward and state your name. Now, you came and spoke already about Mill Hill?
Just additional comments to the meeting.
No, no. Did you already speak about Mill Hill?
I did.
Yeah, and are you coming forward to talk about Mill Hill?
Response to a-
No, no, because our rule generally is that you can either speak once on the project, but you can't say, okay, once before the meeting and once at the vote. You probably didn't know that, so if it's a one-minute comment, please come forward.
One question. Thanks for all your questions about the cost. I just had one question. You want to know, like, we have a town engineer. Would they be able to offer some opinion, free of cost, to look at the property? Like, William Hurley, maybe he could look at the property and give you at least an idea that you wouldn't have to pay for, to get maybe like an opinion from somebody else in the town, since it's part of the town?
So our standard is that we don't go to Q and A, Q and A from the public. Thank you for your comment.
Okay.
And that'll be taken under consideration.
Thank you.
I will say, in the main, the town, through the Public Works Department, has been helpful to the Board of Ed in trying to work with us to save costs because the town officials can answer a question or do something that we don't have to bid out when it comes to opining on an engineering standard about structural steel or et cetera, whatnot. I believe that they would defer to the project architect or the project engineer and not try to put in a volunteer opinion that would be relied on to build a building. But again, we do ask them to help us where they can. Any other member of the public wish to come forward and talk about the capital projects motion? Seeing none, back to the board for action. The motion before the table is that the Board of Education approve the 2018-19 capital projects. With no further discussion, all in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Good questions, and it gives Mr. Cullen things to think about as he brings the project forward, the kind of questions that we might be asking on that project. Onto 6B, the recommended motion to the non-recurring projects is that the Board of Education approve the 2018-19 capital non-recurring projects. Ms. Gerber, Ms. Gerber and Ms. Pitco moved and seconded. And so, Mr. Cullen, do you want to come forward to see if there's any particular comments that you want to make, or we can just simply ask questions? There's various projects, and so who wishes to go first? We can go project by project. Where's the book so I can get it in the right order? What, do you have a book with you?
Actually, I have it with me.
So why don't we ask questions about the security infrastructure upgrades? Any questions from the board on the security infrastructure upgrade? Seeing none, we'll move on to the secondary schools, the CAT 6 electrical project. Any questions from the board on the electrical project for CAT 6? Seeing none. Any comments from the board on the student parking lot replacement for Fairfield Delo High School? Seeing none, the last project, the system-wide IT switch replacement project. Any questions from the board on that project? Seeing none. Whoops, go ahead, Mr. Acer.
Are we still looking good on the grant for this portion?
I haven't talked to Nancy about that yet.
Okay.
She's out today, but when she gets back in, we'll find out. I know on the security grant, it's looking good.
From what I remember, when we discussed this in the previous meeting, you were pretty confident on the the grant with this, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I'll check with her, though.
And if there's any different answer than that, just please send an email to the board.
Definitely.
But if I don't get an email from you, then we're looking still pretty good. Any other questions from board members? Mr. Peterson.
Just to follow up quickly on that, I just, I have it in my, that's a direct federal reimbursement, that's not, that's not state.
Right.
In that case, okay.
You're right.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the IT switch replacement project? And out of deference to a board member who had to step out momentarily, do you have any questions on any of the non-recurring projects? Seeing none, let me go to the public to see if they have, this is yours, right? See if you, any member of the public has a question or comment that they wish to share with the board on the non-recurring projects. If so, please come forward and state your name and address. Yep, first person up.
My name's Kathleen Joy Ross, 682 Beach Road. In terms of the IT switch project, will that enable our school system to be compatible for 2020? In terms of IT infrastructure?
Okay.
Because I think one of the things we're looking at is the past, and we really need to look at the future, because we're so far behind in our infrastructure.
Thank you. Other comments from the public as to, that they would like to share so the board can take that into consideration as we move a project forward? Seeing none, back to the board for a vote. The motion in front of you is that the Board of Education approve the 2018-19 capital non-recurring projects. All in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous, 90. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board of Ed members.
Thank you. Now on to new business, the approval of the collective bargaining agreement. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Fairfield Education Association and Fairfield Public Schools for the period July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2021. Ms. Gerber, followed by Ms. Leeper. See no hands going up?
Discussion.
We had an executive committee where we've, normally is where we have discussion on personnel matters and contracts.
Okay, can I just make a non-related to the contract?
Please make a comment.
Okay. I would just like to say that I know we've been following past practice, but in the future, if we could possibly get the information that we got in the last couple days, or a little earlier, or maybe in the future, just as a suggestion, we have a longer executive session and then possibly some time afterwards before we come to the meeting and vote. I just think that would be helpful for me, because there's a lot of information we go over. So I'm just making a, you know, fruitful suggestion for the future, that if we could try and think about that, I think it might be helpful in the long run, because there may be people like myself that still need time, that can't digest things as fast, that are thrown at us, and it's a lot of information.
It's a valid point. Again, not on the contract, but I'll make a comment about Mr. Acer's observation. This board has kind of followed a practice of how to negotiate and deal with the level of information needed for a contract approval and over a number of years. And clearly- And clearly, each board gets to say, well, what is the kind of information and what format, and how do we want to handle this themselves? And so if enough board members say that's an issue they'd like to talk about, it would have to be talked about in public, because it's not part of strategy about an actual contract, but it's kind of the operational way we do business. If enough of you say you'd like to chat about that, I'll get it on the agenda sometime, well in advance of the next time we have to do these. Now, of course, whatever board makes a decision about this time, three years from now, when there's a different Board of Education here, they get to either follow our suggestion or they get to make a different observation. But, but I think Mr. Asa asks a reasonable question. We do have five new board members who haven't been on the board for other negotiations, and you might have different ideas as to how we should approach it. So I welcome any conversation that the board collectively may want. Mr. Peterson?
My comment is fundamentally the same as Mr. Asa's comment. These are momentous decisions that will bind the town for years to come, and my preference would be to default to more information and greater lead time than less. That being said, I do want to publicly thank the superintendent for being very responsive once the information was let out, and she answered a specific question that I had very, very promptly, and I do appreciate that.
This is a personnel matter, so we don't take a comment from the public on personnel matters. If there's no further comment or questions from the boards, the motion in front of you is that the Board of Education approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Fairfield Education Association and Fairfield Public Schools for the period July 1, 18 through June 30, 2021. All in favor, please raise your hand. Mrs. Leeper, Ms. Leeper, Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Gerber, myself, Philip Dwyer, Jacobson, Mrs. Maxon, Connolly, all opposed? Ms. Pitko, Mr. Asa, Mr. Peterson. The motion is approved six to zero. As you know, these contracts must-
Six-three.
Six-three, I'm sorry. This contract will be presented to the RTM, and so a memo will have to go to them, which I believe will be done in time for it to be on the RTM agenda for January, and therefore at the committee meeting level the Monday prior. The RTM, once we notify them, have 30 days to act. They can either act, which they normally do, or they can just simply let the contract get approved with no vote. But count on the fact that we will need this board at the committee meeting level and at the RTM meeting for the month of January. Having said that, let's move on to item number eight, approval of minutes. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of December 12, 2017. Mrs. Gerber, Ms. Pitko, any questions, comments? If not, all in favor, please raise your hand. It's 90. Thank you very much. And the second set of minutes, that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the special meeting of December 14, 2017. Mrs. Gerber, followed by Ms. Vitale, Mrs. Vitale.
I have one friendly amendment.
One, any comments on the minutes, Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a friendly amendment on page five of the special meeting minutes. There are two spots where I neglected to put the speaker's last name. So it's right after the sentence that ends "new sped director," it says Ms., and there's a blank, and then about 10 lines down, right at the end of the line, it says Ms., and there's a blank. So just insert the name, which is Levesque, L-E-V-E-S-Q-U-E, is the name that should be inserted in those two spots. So, and I can send that to Mrs. Brown, I just wanted to-
And I thought I saw an email this afternoon that said, here's a new page five. Did that capture this change or not? It did not. I thought I saw a page five on the packet.
Oh, that was enclosure three. That's for enclosure three. That was enclosure three.
Okay, different page five.
That was not the minutes.
Okay, so-
So this is really just a technicality. I will forward an email-
How about a motion to approve the minutes?
As amended.
As amended. And normally, what happens is these minutes stay the same, but you note the amendment that's in the minutes for today. Mr. Asa, you had a question? No? Okay. Everybody understand the motion on the table to approve the minutes as amended by Mrs. Gerber's comment? All in favor, please raise your hand. I'm waiting to know whether-
I'm abstaining, I wasn't there.
Okay, so eight-
Eight oh one.
Eight oh one, Mrs. Pitko abstains. Okay. Superintendent's report.
I just have a couple of items tonight. First of all, just with the weather, of course, you know, having bad weather, just a reminder how we actually make those calls. We do in Fairfield subscribe to the Connecticut Weather Service, so we get updates all throughout the day. And if we could advise from the Connecticut Weather Service that actually says they have very high confidence and they are recommending closure, generally, you will see school districts close. I am of the philosophy that if I have that strong of a recommendation, and I know me waking up at 4:00 in the morning is not going to change my mind, sometimes you have to use the advice of the Weather Service. I do tend to call early. And so, just letting you know with Thursday and Friday. Also looking at just, I did email the board, but, you know, so far for facilities, we've done pretty well. We've had one pipe burst at Mill Hill last week, we're able to clean that up in a classroom. We've had three breaks at Fairfield Ludlow High School. The staff worked really hard on Sunday, thought everything looked great Sunday night, and then the phone rang early Monday morning, and they had to go and clean up another pipe. So we're hoping we don't get any more of those as things start thawing out. Just over the winter concert, I do just want to say what a joy it was to attend Ludlow and Ward's winter concerts. They're phenomenal, and just really enjoyed both of those. I also, this year, I wasn't able to go to this concert last year. This year, I was able to go to Burr's sing-along, and that was really fun. I thought it was going to be just all the students, but actually, it was a ton of parents. It was amazing. It was almost impossible to find parking. As I was getting there, they were parked all the way out on the street and literally walking up to Burr, but that was a wonderful winter event, and I was thrilled that they let me know about that. You do have an attachment tonight, just that you had asked for when our team had done the presentation on student achievement. Not meant to be a formal presentation tonight, but we do have Mr. Rasmussen and Chip Hetta here, if you do have some basic kind of questions on the PSAT and the SAT scores for you. And that was just being provided at the board request. That's it. Thank you.
Questions for the superintendent on how well she did in repairing the water pipes?
Yeah.
But more importantly, any questions on the PSAT and SAT data analysis? That I think this was also sent in a board packet in advance.
Yes.
It's on your, it's at your table, but I think you got it in advance.
Yes.
Any questions that people want to ask tonight on those two projects? Mrs. Jacobson?
The first question that I have is, thank you so much for pulling this information together for us. The first question I have is that there are a number of questions behind the presentation, and I'm wondering if that's, I understand a lot of that is ongoing and continuous work. Will there be answers to some of those questions provided as a backup to this presentation?
And you're referring to the last page about guiding questions, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Paul Rasmussen, Director of Secondary Math and Student Achievement. I would actually categorize those as probably like ongoing questions, that we continue to investigate, as we continue to learn, we talk to our teachers, go back and forth, and it's just a continued investigation of, continuing to learn about this assessment, how are different students performing in different classes, in different levels, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, I'm particularly interested in, just as a specific, so I understand that, it's an instructional issue, but how well does the STAR reading and math assessment correlate to SAT?
We, I actually haven't done that analysis. Actually, John and I were just talking about that today.
Is there taking that throughout the year, and we, is it-
And really, for secondary math, this is our first year of implementing STAR math at the high school. So this is really our learning year of kind of seeing how those correlate. For example, how well does the STAR correlate to-
Because you have a baseline plus one, yes?
So, so, so we can actually go back, we're just getting into the information.
Okay.
And the same holds true for reading. This is this first year we've done it for 10th grade, so it would be our first opportunity once the data is complete after the year, to be able to run that correlation with the PSAT data.
Okay. The second thing that I noted, and again, it's not about tonight's presentation, is that this is a very basic average between the two schools, generally speaking, of this information, but there wasn't a subgroup analysis done and presented, which I think also would be helpful for us to see and to have, which I did it myself for my own self. But, because as we know, the high and the low doesn't, the average of that doesn't tell us how our subgroups are performing, and where there's decline or improvement, which there is both in some of our subgroup populations. So just food for thought for the future, that I think it would be helpful for us to know, especially as we're talking about budget. And it's simple enough, I've done it, to know where in our wheelhouse, we could be using some additional supports, I think, in certain areas, in terms of both math and just some of our subgroups. Whereas other things, there was, you know, bright spots in there, within that too. I'm not saying it was all negative, but I think that for this purposes, when we're really looking at achievement and achievement gap, we need to have those broken down in terms of who, right? So, but thank you for this initial piece. Thank you.
Mrs. Maxon Connolly?
Piggybacking on Ms. Jacobson's questions regarding the STAR correlation, we did, and now I forget if that was two meetings ago, when we were talking about data, we did hear from you very definitively a correlation between the STAR data and the SBAK data. So if I can cheat a step here, we do have eighth-grade SBAK information. What kind of correlation are we finding between that and their 10th-grade performance?
I don't know if I can answer that right here.
Okay.
I mean, off the top of my head.
Fair enough.
I would say, from my quick understanding, it's fairly strong, so I mean, so I would-
So by the, what is it, the transitive?
Transitive.
There we go, that's my math point for the night.
Your high school geometry teacher did well.
Yeah.
So, yes, based off of that, I would hypothesize, would probably see a similar, but I'm not going to say definitive, but let the numbers speak for themselves.
And, and also to, I apologize, I don't know, Mr. Trippier, if you would agree with that with the language arts as well?
Yeah, I would. I mean, I think it's been, because we have more successive years of the-
Because we have more successive years of middle school SBA data and STAR data, Dr. Rasmussen was able to run that correlation, and we were really pleased at how tight it was. And it really made it the whole sort of process of using the STAR assessment as sort of like a precursor assessment, sort of very predictive of how kids were going to do on the SBA. The PSAT, we would assume the PSAT and the SAT would have a similar correlation, but he hasn't run that yet, because again, we don't have the definitive data. I mean, especially the year-to-year data we have for ninth and 10th grade yet. We could do it for eighth grade, as you were saying, but again, we would have to see as they move up in terms of a cohort, but again, we would, he'll, he'll do that very well.
So, and obviously, we don't have the comparative, but we would be establishing the basis this year-
Without a doubt.
-with the eighth grade now as that 10th grade, so that next year, that would be a point we could look at.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And this is something I'm sure has been asked in the past, and I can't recall, how much subgroup, not, not the demographics, but the subgroup, the subtests, the, excuse me, the subscores of the PSAT, SAT, do we get that level of information off SBA? And, and, I mean, like, have you, I know that there are subscores, but have we noticed any kind of, or is that something else we need to look at, I apologize, of how one subscore correlates to another? Because that's really, obviously, where you can get some of your targeted instruction. I notice the hearts of algebra here. But is that something also that would be part of this analysis?
Yes.
I realized when I was setting myself up for with that one halfway through. Specifically with the math, where you say that target that the Algebra I students are not performing well on tasks related to hearts of, is that, who are these Algebra I students? Are these ones taking it as sophomores? Or, I wasn't sure who this was. I mean, everyone has, will have taken algebra, or be in the process at least by their sophomore year, correct?
Well, that's one of our point of emphasis, is to continually to kind of, kind of always cycle back. Because always like, from my presentation a couple weeks ago, is if you stop using it, then, then you start to lose it.
Right.
I mean, so that's one, that's one of, one of our point of emphasis as, as, not just in our high school, but also our middle school, is to keep on coming back, recycling, because we're finding is, we want to see that continued improvement, not just leaving, but also as they continue into geometry and Algebra II, in that area.
But I guess as a budget focus, or perhaps to Mrs. Jacobson's point about that demographic subgroup, I'm still unclear who you mean when you say Algebra I students. Are these the ones, when they're currently taking it, are then not doing well on algebra?
No, no, I think it's more as, once they, once they leave and then they continue on. We're looking for, I'm, we're still looking for continued improvement. Now, that's what, probably what my point of emphasis here is. Once they leave algebra, we're also looking to also ramp up the, because the type of tasks that are on this assessment, it's not your traditional Algebra I task, they're more of an integrated type of approach of type of a problem. That's the type of problems that we want our students to become, where we talked about is becoming those good problem solvers. So it's not just that, okay, graph a line, y equals mx plus b, it's more of an integrated approach in terms of the type of the problem. So that's what we've been trying to stress, those, no more of this integrated problem instead of just a straightforward problem, as I would probably say it.
Okay, I think I'm not asking my question well. May I defer?
Nope.
No, if Mrs. Jacobson is going to ask the question better than I'm asking, okay.
I'm just trying to clarify a little bit.
It's-
So take a third stab at it, or?
So again, my takeaway is that the students need work, period. Sophomore, junior, in pre-cow, in geometry, whatever, need more work on hearts of algebra.
Always, continue to work on those type of things.
Right, so it's, I guess I'm just finding the algebra, the title, Algebra I students are not performing well, that was what I was trying to get clarification on. And then, I guess I just, my only other question is to the high school regarding the language arts. I was curious what level of usefulness, or to what level of use at all are the subscores and scores put by the department? I know there was reference, I remember Dr. Boyce making reference that in that June professional development of this past June, that they made great use of taking this data and starting to do something with it, that you appreciated the professional development time to be able to do that. I was wondering if you could clarify that at all further of, because there are parts of this I can see not being something that really becomes an explicit focus, and others that might be, and I don't know if you can provide any direction to that.
Sure, I think there's a few ways to look at this. As an English teacher, I think one of the things that intimidates English teachers is numbers. And so the first thing that we did with them was break down, what are the data, what does the actual data mean in terms of numbers? And the way that the SAT test has evolved and changed over time has been both useful and a little bit frustrating for us as well, because one thing that they've done is that traditionally speaking, you know, the two main focuses, two areas of focus that we, that we would concentrate on would be reading, reading comprehension and analysis, and then writing, long-form writing. Well, they've done away with long-form writing. And so therefore, now the, the way in which writing is assessed is not typically, on the SAT, is not typically the way that most writing has been assessed in most classrooms, which are sentence completion, it's more technical, and it has to do with fixing-
Grammar.
Grammar, in so much as it's like a draft that's given to you, it's sort of like a, a context is created for you for kids to do revision, so it's a little bit fake. And so, you know, how do you kind of mirror that by doing it, that's a more authentic way in a classroom to sort of match that? So that's a challenge. But I think at the same time, too, the way in which that the SAT and the PSAT reporting now is so rich in terms of the kinds of questions that we are able to then look at, but specifically, and I think Dr. Rasmussen talked about this with math, what's really helpful for us as a department is what is the predominant question type that kids are getting wrong? And you can see that, and then look to see like, well, what is it that trips them up, and therefore, what is it that we can do in our classroom to match that? So really, it's in the beginning stages of understanding, like, how do we look at that data? How do we make those kind of questions, those stems, those experiences more authentic in our classroom, and then trying to match those to what they're going to experience on the, on the test? But at the same time, too, what we also have to know is that the way that the SAT has changed over the last couple of years is the, is the kinds of reading that they're asking kids to do, they'll get one fiction, just one, out of the four. And so the second one is going to be a primary document from history. So it's the same time, it's also sharing this information with- So it's the same time, it's also sharing this information with social studies teachers, because they're, the kinds of documents that they're going to read on the SAT are very specific. The third is going to be some sort of, the third and fourth could be science. And so it's about reading comprehension, but it's comprehension across the disciplines. And then the other subscores that they get, which are smaller, useful to a degree, are reading in social studies and reading in the sciences. And so those I think are helpful as well, but this is all very, very new data that the SAT is just giving us, so really it's only about one year that we've had access to this. So it's pretty much ongoing, but it's really helpful that they're breaking it down this way now, because before it was just, here's your number and that's it.
Well, first of all, thank you so much for referencing the other departments, that under no circumstance should this be solely falling on the English teacher. And that's something that in some districts has to be a point fought over. So I'm very glad to hear that. The only other question I have is, to what degree has the district made use of any CES support, workshops, or anything like that? Has that proven to be useful at all in terms of educating teachers or yourselves? Or have you found that useful or availed yourselves of it?
CES, not specifically, but we've been to a number of workshops put on by the College Board.
Actually, that's what I meant.
Oh, okay. In terms of the College Board, yeah, we actually have, from the very beginning in terms of changes that were going to be made, the score reporting, we've also sent teachers out to the same ones who are coming back to do presentations to the departments. What's also helpful is that the College Board has created sort of mini online courses, if you will, to sort of look at the question types and then how to do that work within your classroom. So it's a combination of those things, but we have taken advantage of those.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the board? Of course, if you have questions that you want to follow up, feel free to contact the Here's what the questions on the back of this document mean to me. That these tests were never intended to evaluate teachers. They were never intended to say, well, how does this school do versus another school? Or this cohort versus another cohort? They were intended to help our teachers, improve their teaching, and better serve our students. And the fact that you are asking these questions means that you are using these tests, in my mind, for what they were purposed for, and that's to help our students. So I want to thank you for diligently asking these questions of yourselves. Any other questions on the superintendent's report? Hearing none, on to committee and liaison reports. Do we have any committee or liaison reports? I'll go, start it, I'll just go around the line. Ms. Pitco.
I actually have two. I'm going to start, I went to my first meeting at the Department of Health, learned a lot about the town that I didn't know, pure-elled afterwards. One of the things that came up, unfortunately my cellphone died, but Jill Mitchell, who's our nursing supervisor, she was able to get EpiPens for the school district at a discounted rate, which is great, saved the Board of Ed some money. Went to SEPTA meeting, Special Ed PTA. The next meeting is January 31st at 7:30 at Fairfield-Ludlow High School. That's also the same day they're going to be looking at the SEPTA grants that were, and deciding who wins those. There's a SEPTA Teen Social, January 26th from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. Oh, and at our SEPTA meeting on January 31st, Mr. Mancusi is going to come and talk about the new programs to all the parents and teachers who come.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Vitale? Ms. Pitco? Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli.
I'm just curious, and I don't know if this is actually to Ms. Pitco or to Dr. Jones, but through SEPTA, has there been much education regarding the Medicaid and the support staff here and that filing? Is that something that the SEPTA community has gotten any education on?
It hasn't been mentioned at a meeting.
No, I was actually looking at Mr. Mancusi, who handles that program for us.
So, Mr. Mancusi, do you want to come forward and answer the question the best you can?
Hi, Rob Mancusi, Executive Director, Special Education and Special Programs. In terms of the Medicaid rollout, we have contracted now with our Medicaid vendor, CompuClaim, who is widely used throughout the state of Connecticut. We have posted, I believe today, for our Medicaid clerk, in terms of the rollout to the parents and the process of getting parental consent and sharing that information, we do have a packet that is going to be rolled out to staff in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Vitale.
PT Council had their first general membership meeting of the year last night. They're gearing up for budget season as well, encouraging PTAs to come out and advocate on behalf of education. Just to reiterate Ms. Maxon-Cannelli's comments from last month, PTA Council has money to give, so any teachers out there, please apply for teacher grants. Any PTAs at elementary schools, middle schools, looking for support for programming, PTA Council is there to help. Last night they approved $1,000 in seed money to bring a showing of Breaking Points, which is a movie that focuses on Adderall abuse by teenagers. They're looking to hopefully screen that in the spring prior to testing season for finals and SATs. In addition, they are also lending financial support to the Achievement Gap Task Force. They're matching any funds that that group raises. So far, the Task Force has raised $3,000, which will be matched by PTAC. Those funds will be used to cover travel expenses, as parents and students and teachers from both high schools will be attending a conference in San Diego. And last but not least, they, State PTA is accepting nominations for Administrator and Teacher of the Year, so if anybody has anyone they would like to nominate, that information can be found on the Connecticut CT, PTA website. Thanks.
Any questions for Ms. Vitale? None? Any, yes?
Yeah, just wanted to report that the Osborne-Hill Building Committee was disbanded by the Board of Selectmen last week, so that is done.
Any questions for, do we have any liaison reports here?
No, I'll be going to CS for the first time on Thursday.
I'll see you there.
Yeah.
Mr. Asa.
Holland Hill has their next building committee meeting this week on Thursday. It will be at Town Hall, not the school. So if anybody's interested in going, please check out the agenda online and make sure they note the location. It's just approval of invoices and some schedule matters, so.
Any questions? If not, Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli.
Just briefly, that the Policy Committee has made its calendar of meetings for 2018, and we did build in extra meetings to be sure that we can meet the deadline of getting the high school graduation requirements to the board for that first June meeting, so that we have that discussion then. And if we have to add extra meetings, we'll add extra meetings, so hopefully we will work very efficiently that. And we look forward soon to more information from Mr. Cummings regarding the part that precedes the policy involvement in terms of the other stakeholders in the district. Otherwise, I'm not making any promises about other policies, because I keep being wrong, so.
So if I may make a comment about other policies. Most of you know that the Policy Committee has been working on a new policy, one that doesn't exist now. It is not uncommon for us to take a policy that is 80% the same from the prior policy, have a first read, ask a couple of questions, and then vote approval of it. One of the policies, whenever it comes out, that will not be the case. And I know that Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli will very much appreciate that when the policy does come in front of you for a first read, that you actually read it in advance, and that you think about it in advance, so that you can come to the first read meeting and ask whatever questions you have, so that the Policy Committee can take that into consideration as they wrestle through and bring it forward for action. Is that a fair statement?
Very fair, and just to clarify, we did in fact end up breaking it into two. This is the, for the political activities, we broke it into two distinct parts, and I thank you very much for saying that, very much appreciate people really looking this one over, because again, it is brand new.
And also, at the risk of saying that, and Ms. Maxon-Cannelli would have said, well, I wish you hadn't said that, she has reached out to the chairs of the two primary political parties in town. She is reaching out to staff. We are reaching out to the district leadership team, the administrators who in the main will have to enforce it, because we want to make sure that this is a policy that, because it's new, people within the community understand it and don't get surprised, when did you do this? So I thank you for that kind of, over and above the cause of duty to make those additional conversations. Any questions for Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli? Ms. Peterson.
I have no questions.
Okay.
I forgot to make, I forgot to make an announcement.
What?
I forgot.
Oh, it's too late. Ms. Leeper.
It was before the holiday break, which is now feeling like ages ago, but the RTM did vote to approve the administrator's contract.
Yes, thank you very much.
Phil, I just need to make a clarification.
Please do.
I barely read this, but Jill Mitchell was able to get the EpiPens for free, not at a reduced cost, which saved the district $25,000.
Great.
Again, for new board members, in case you don't know, the Board of Health Town Budget pays for all of our nurses. They're stationed in the schools, but they're paid by the town, they're supervised by the town, because our district really would say, so how do we supervise a nurse? It's better that the Director of Health supervise the nurses. But by being part of the town, we do get a benefit, not only in the savings of salaries, but because they have access to things that we don't have, and so it's a very good working relationship. Now, for the comments, open board comment. Any board members have a comment they wish to make at this time?
I'll make a comment. Before a break also, I had the pleasure of touring four of our schools with Dr. Jones, and Ms. Vitale came to several. And so I just want to thank Headmaster Hatze and Ms. Tiley, Mr. Formato, and Ms. Roxby for answering my seemingly endless questions and taking your extremely valuable time to show me around and introduce me to your school communities. It was, it really was a pleasure, thank you. And also, I was able to attend Ward's Corollion Concert, and thanks to Mr. Peterson's recommendation, and brought my husband, and it was a treat of a date night, so.
Other comments from board members during open board comment? Seeing none, on to public comment. Any members of the public who wish to come forward and speak on agenda items? Now that you've heard us go through the agenda and heard our comments, please come forward and state your name and address. Seeing none, adjournment? That this regular meeting of the Board of Education adjourned. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, Ms. Leeper, all in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. Thank you very much.